30:00 PM. Thank you for coming and welcome to the May 9th Council Meeting. Mrs. RC C., will you call the roll?
Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Here.
Ms. Hanakin?
Here.
Mr. Monarch?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
I would like to now ask everyone to stand. Our Council President, Dave Engel, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Councilwoman Jan Tully will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon me, I actually printed it, but I forgot it, so I have to pull it up. But a moment of silence is never a bad thing. As we gather tonight, we ask for wisdom, strength, and humility as the servants for our residents. The elections are long past, and our charge is to focus on today and how today can be made best for tomorrow. Help us to not be all about me, but to be all about our residents, our businesses, and our employees. Thank you.
Very good job. Mike, could you please get me the sign-in sheet? All right, we have some minutes, Josephine. Do I -- we have any changes to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of our regular meeting of April 24, 2014, as presented by the Clerk of Council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we're gonna move right along into comments by the public. All right. All right, comments by the public. We ask you to come up -- there's a microphone right up here and state your name and address. And please try and limit your comments to five minutes, although we're not real stringent on that. But remember, there might be somebody else that would like to speak. First on the list this evening is Marty Bergman. Marty, come on down.
Can I pass these pictures out?
Sure.
My name is Marty Bergman. I'm here to talk about Air Lane Drive. I've lived on Air Lane for almost 10 years now, and a few of the neighbors have lived there longer. And as best we can remember, that we don't think Air Lane Drive was ever resurfaced, ever since it was put in back in the '60s, okay? So we're talking close to 40 years or four decades of that street being patched upon patch upon patch. And recently, with the development off of Skyland there of the new homes, I forget what the name of the development is right now. A lot of the heavy equipment haulers have cut through our road to get to Ledge and then to Shepherd, rather going Skyland to Shepherd, where you got that little mirror to see that, you know, cars coming over the bridge. And that along with the third thing, the winter that we've had, has turned the road. I mean, there's probably not a four-by-eight piece of asphalt that's not cracked right now. And with the bad weather we've had, the patches that were put on have just filled with water, frozen, and gotten bad, as you can see. It makes it hard to navigate the road in a car, and it's definitely unsafe for a bicyclist or a jogger or somebody just taking a walk in the evening and that. And I would just like to ask the Board to take a look at these pictures and please help us save our road before summer. The money's available, and we would like to see you spend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty, and I apologize for the condition of that road. We're gonna try and help you. All right, next on the list is Dorothy Pearlman. Hi, Dorothy.
Hi. I'm also a resident on Air Lane Drive. I've been on Air Lane Drive 31 years. In that length of time, nothing -- the road has never -- our street has never been resurfaced. And one of the neighbors who was there 10 years longer than I've been there, he couldn't make it tonight, but he said is the 10 years before it's never been resurfaced. And he built his home when it was just a field. And I think about 15 years ago, Cesna Avenue was resurfaced. It looked beautiful. We just assumed that when they were doing Cesna, that they would just come and do -- there's only 14 houses on Air Lane, but they just bypassed us, never touched the road. And it really is unsightly. I had out-of-town guests, and this was two years ago, and they were appalled at what they saw two years ago, and they looked at it as a reflection of what the entire city of Macedonia looks like. And they said, "Is this your city?" So that -- it just impacts us, and we're just begging. I know Rita had come -- I had a garage sale last year.
I am always on your street, so.
Yeah, and I know you had said that you'd help us, because we are looking for help now. We really -- the money's there. We need it done now. It's just with the rains that we had the last couple of weeks, it's every day it looks worse. I don't think there's a day that goes by that you don't see more of the rocks and everything coming up from the ground. So it is unsightly, and we're asking that it get done now, before the summer.
I know I've sent Jimmy over there a bunch of times. He's helped a couple of residents out for me to patch some areas and so forth.
I know, yeah.
You know, I'm always in it. I live over there, too, so I'm in that area all the time.
But as you can see, the patching's not -- we need more than that now, too.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Randy Fitzsimmons. Randy?
Good evening. Randy Fitzsimmons, I live at 9593 Air Lane Drive. And like my neighbors, it's not -- it's embarrassing. Air Lane Drive is embarrassing. It's in shambles. It needs repaired. We don't have cement curbs. We don't have sidewalks that our other neighbors, you know, have. We pay our taxes. This money has been laid out to repave our street. It needs done. Needs done. It's a safety issue. You can't even walk a baby stroller down our street and avoid a pothole. Can't walk your dog -- we have no sidewalk to walk a dog, so we have to walk the street. You can't walk down the street. The side of the street is so eroded, there's nothing there. There's nothing. Nothing. The pictures tell the truth. The white edge line is nonexistent. 60% of this street, measured it, has no white edge line. That's a safety issue. Safety. If somebody gets hurt, who's responsible? I think we know. It's time to get it fixed. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next on the list is Kurt Lobinger. Kurt?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak about the roads tonight, but maybe in a little different way. First of all, I think that the cut on Route 8, if that's going to happen, I think that all the merchants should have to pay for that. I don't think that we, as taxpayers here in Macedonia, need to do that. We can use our money to fix Air Lane and elsewhere. A while back, Freeway Drive, it was poor, just like what Air Lane was. Came to the merchants along there, all the business people along there, we paid to put that road in there. We did that. We did our part. That's some of the oldest area Macedonia, the businesses and industry there, we did that. If the people down there in the commons want it, let them do it. There's other ways in and out of that. If that water line erupts, like you would lead to many a time, yeah, it's a problem. It's a problem anywhere in Macedonia when a road or a fire happens or whatever it is. We need to take care of that. And while we're speaking about Freeway Drive and the business people paying for that, I have concerns about what's happening here in the next two and a half to three years when the bridges are replaced. What is taking place with the city to guarantee that if that road that we paid for, the businesses paid for, is torn up when they move those cranes and those cement trucks down to those bridges? And it's the same way with Ledge Road. When they cross there, how are they gonna get that equipment in there? They know how to do it. The contract was let today, and they're ready to roll. What guarantee do we have that that road is gonna be okay? What are you doing to make sure that that's fine?
Are you asking me?
Well, I'd like to ask you.
All right.
I mean, I would hope that.
In other words, you want an answer right now? All right.
Well, I can wait. It's not that demanding. But I know there was another little incident. I don't know the whole story, but that was like Gordon Foods, something happened to a road over there and getting it replaced. I just wanna know that the road's gonna be fixed when they left. We paid for that road.
Well, I'll tell you why. First of all, you got a hell of a road. During the construction of that road, we stopped the construction, made them start over again, just to make sure it would handle truck traffic, because you know that road has a lot of truck traffic. Mike?
With ODOT's projects, what they do, and what's standard for ODOT, is they videotape the roads prior to construction or any equipment going on there. Then after the project, both the city and the state go over those videos and see if the same condition exists, if there's conditions that are worse, then the ODOT pays for the fix. They did that along Valley View Road with Faith Fellowship Movement of the Dirt, and then Route 8 also.
Okay, well, you brought up Valley View Road and the moving of the soil over there. That road needs repair, and you can see where the trucks ran along the side, and it's broken. But I'm not here for that. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about Ledge Road also. You keep bringing up that bridge. I've lived on Ledge Road all my life. I probably have gone through that bridge more than anybody in this city there. When that movement of those pillars are coming down and the shaking of it, there's going to be problems there. They're gonna have to get some little service vehicles in and out from one side to another down along Ledge Road. It's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a serious problem right there because of that construction that's taking place. And that's gonna be here, as you know, for two and a half years.
Yeah, it's grave concern of us. With that bridge, as of Thursday, I've contacted the federal government and PUCO again. In July, it'll be one year since we first brought them out here and said, "You have to do something," and we got fencing. And now the rocks are falling behind the fencing.
Right.
So we're on it, and when you're dealing with the railroad, unfortunately, Kurt, they don't answer to anybody. Sure, for sure, not the mayor of Macedonia. They barely answer to the federal government. So we're doing our best on that. As far as that right in, right out off of Route 8, the intention is not for the city to pay for that. The intention is to give that publicity to that project, perhaps it can help us get funding. Right now, I'm trying to get funding for that through the Port Authority, not our city.
Okay, just as long as it stays that way, that's fine by me. I would just hate to see the okay to do it, and then suddenly we're out there doing it. I just wanna be assured of that.
Well, the big boxes don't respond to us corporately. Their managers, they're all over that. They'd love it. But the big boxes corporate won't even answer our letters. So we're trying to give it a little more attention.
Okay, that's fine. Just don't spend our taxpayers' money to do that. That's all I'm asking.
You can count on it.
Okay, thank you. Now, one other little thing, has nothing to do with the roads, I'd like to bring up. We've got an excellent police department here. People don't come into Macedonia to do a lot of damage, a lot of things that they do here, because they know we've got a police department that's on it. However, police department needs a little bit of help, too. We help with other departments. We buy equipment. We do this and we do that. The police department really needs, I think, to have another detective. It's been many, 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 many years that we've had two detectives. I think it's time that we look into that and hire another detective.
I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you. And everything I've said tonight is my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes?
I have -- I contacted Jimmy, and there was a big boulder that fell off, you know, on Ledge Road behind the fence where the bridge is, and it's gone now. Did we move it, or did the railroad move it?
It's mysterious. It wasn't us.
Okay, 'cause I did wanna ask that question. Okay.
We didn't touch it.
It was big, and it was there, and it's gone.
Poof.
Yes. And that's -- and I seen the news over there. You know, I stopped and spoke with the news, I believe.
Well, we're getting good coverage.
Right.
We got Channel 19 on our side, Channel 3 on our side, and with the letters writing that's going on now, maybe we can get some momentum, even with my trip to Washington. That's why I'm going about that bridge.
That was a huge piece of boulder that fell off.
Yes, it was.
And it's like, it's gone. It's like, I've been paying attention to it, and I'm like, "Where'd that boulder go?"
It's gone.
All right. I thought Jimmy moved it.
Nope.
All right.
Actually, the fencing, we shouldn't be touching that fencing.
Right.
That's theirs. When something happens to it, they have to fix it. But Kurt's reference to the 271 Bridge, I had great concern for that, Kurt. The bad news is that one of the actual abutments that holds that bridge up is part of the Ledge Road Bridge. It's the northwest corner, all right? That's the bad news. The good news is they're gonna widen the span on both bridges in 82. So the new spans and the pile driving will be a distance away. But that don't matter. I mean, that bridge is junk, period, and it needs to be fixed. And God forbid that they are driving pile 100 yards away and it collapses, and it'll take out 271 Bridge and Macedonia. And then it's too late. Moving on, Bill Jenkins. Hi, Bill.
He brought rocks.
You're not gonna throw it, are you, Bill?
I'm -- Bill Jenkins. I live at the corner of Bonnie and Blueberry Roads, and I'm here tonight because they are seriously deteriorating. Now, I support these people, too. They sound like they might be worse things than I am. Nonetheless, there are other places that are also seriously deteriorated within the city of Macedonia. I've lived in Macedonia 45 years. In that time, I have not had very many problems with city government or what they provided. It's the first time I've shown up to say, "Where are our roads? What is happening with them? Why aren't they being repaired?" I have a number of concerns regarding my street. First of which is obviously safety, possibility of tripping. My wife, a year and a half ago, tripped over the street going to the mailbox, fell and hit her head. Fortunately, she was not seriously injured. She was all right. But I had an immediate example, if you will, of the lack of safety potentially on the street. The second concern I have is the look of the neighborhood. People come into this neighborhood, and what do they see? I obviously see the street much more before they see the housing, perhaps. And in looking at that street, what impact does that have on visitors? But particularly visitors who might want to buy. If we were to happen to want to sell, what's happening to our property value? We're not selling, but other people might. And the fact that roads are not up kept is a threat to property values, which supposedly is something called reason why we're here in Macedonia. It's a middle-to-upper-middle-class community, and you would expect things would be taken care of generally. A third concern that I have is what I've been told about the length of the time that it's gonna take to possibly get to my street. One to two years. Well, it's already in horrible shape, and we'll get to yours probably in the next year. Maybe not. But it certainly will further deteriorate. This is an example. I picked this up in only two square feet of the ditch. And I assure you that this runs along a length of my ditch, which is -- I have a corner home, and that's a fairly large lot compared to some of the other ones. It's, you know, it's a wash-in rocks now. What's gonna happen just in six months? Particularly go through again next winter, if we have the same kind of winter, what will it be like? Safety issues, again. Definite safety issues. Now, I've been told that the city is not acting partly because it doesn't have the money. Well, I seem to recall that last year, some of you were not on this particular council, but the council voted not to put a renewal levy on the ballot that already dealt with roads. As a citizen, I would like to have been able to vote on that. Why wasn't it sent out? All the numerous times city councils and other people say, "Oh, let's give it to the citizens to vote on." Well, it was not given to us to vote on. And I, you know, I understand that the money is needed, and I would vote, I would even work for or behalf of a levy. I think it's the obligation, or a number of obligations of the city, to protect its citizens. Police and fire protection obviously are among the first. But roads are pretty high up there, I would think, in terms of safety issues, in terms of deteriorating property values. There's a need to not wait one, two, three years, whatever it takes. What does it need to do? Well, I have had experience, some of you may remember, on the school board. We had leaking roofs, and we got tons of complaints when those roofs leaked. Well, we have a superintendent who recommended that we have a permanent improvement levy, that we pass that levy and keep renewing it, because people pass renewals, and that that would consistently provide the money. In my mind, that's a sense of planning, which does not appear to be present at this time in Macedonia. Planning, looking at streets, looking at what needs to be done, figuring out how to provide the money to deal with the things that need to be done in order to keep this a respectable middle-to-upper-middle-class community. So I guess that hits the major points that I would make in regard to. If anything of you would like one that you might create a ring out of, something of that sort, I'll be glad to share them with you.
By the way, Bill, the permanent improvement levy did lapse. I think you're aware.
Go ahead, it did. It lost. No?
No. It just ran out. It was not given to you to renew.
Right, that -- right, right.
No, I mean the school board you're referring to, the school levy.
Oh, well, they dropped it. They dropped it on the school board.
Mr. Jenkins, I run your streets. When I don't see you up at the rec center, it's because I'm running all the B-streets, as I call them.
Oh, okay.
And you're absolutely right. It's like a bomb crater, which is the same as the pictures that we were just showing. You're weaving and bobbing to get around, and there are no sidewalks.
Right.
And I know there was a report provided by Mr. Vlad of the streets, and it was interesting to see that Air Lane was originally built in 1942, and your streets are all in the '50s.
'50s, right.
I grew up in Navajo. It was interesting. That wasn't built till '60. I always thought we were --
Right.
-- had older homes, but I guess not.
I was not that far away.
So, you know, your cry is very well heard.
And I've heard that.
All of you.
At least another 20 or 30 streets are considered in need of repair.
Oh, more than that, but.
It's a lot.
Something needs to be done in general. I advocate for these people right away. But something also needs to be done.
All right, well, Bill, just let me -- let me just say this. Bill, one of the first things I did do after I became Streets and Roads Chair was ask for a complete view of what we need in terms of road repair. We have a very, very long-term problem that has built up over the last decade. We haven't been repairing roads regularly and in the proper way, and some roads, as Air Lane is an example, are completely in disrepair and need full-depth repair. There are -- there's a lot of money involved here. We're gonna be looking at how to finance all of this, but next Wednesday, we're gonna have a meeting on this, I'm chairing, to look at everything we need and how we're gonna try to finance it. So anyway, it'll be on Wednesday, May 14, at 7:00 PM here in City Hall.
It has some been 10 years. It's been a lot, lot longer than 10 years. In the last 10 years, we fixed at least one road a year and paid for it cash. Now, before that, any time roads were fixed, they did it with bonds, and that made the city terribly in debt. I think what you're saying is that we need a long-range plan, and I've heard that from my engineers for 10 years. They've told me if we spent $1 million a year, it would take 20 years till we get back to Street Number One. That's how many millions of dollars worth of roadwork we need. So you're not falling on deaf ears, but we have a tough road to hold because we can't just raise prices. People have to vote for it. And I wish it would've been back on the ballot for you to vote for, very much so. By the way, you look good. I haven't seen you for a lot of years. And I'm as old as your street is, and I have a 50-year-old son. My God, I can't believe 1942 never been fixed. Unbelievable.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out on this inventory list that we have, there's 32 roads that are listed as in poor condition, and I would ask that we provide this online for the residents to look at. And we're gonna talk about what the engineers have already identified next Wednesday, right? I mean, I think it should be a finance meeting, not a roads meeting, because we know what the problem is, but we need to find a way to correct it. Talking about what we already know is not gonna accomplish anything.
Well, I just disagree with you. I think we need to know exactly what we're dealing with. Some of the roads are not in horrible condition, but after this winter, if we don't crack seal them and do some work on them, they're gonna be in the condition that you're in right now, and we don't want that because that's extremely expensive. So we need to look at the whole issue. We need to look at the financing, and we'll be doing that next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, so.
Thank you.
Your budget provided for $8,000 in crack sealing, that's not gonna solve the problem.
Jan, 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 I have a question.
I mean.
He talked about the renewal levy for the roads. Do you know when that?
There was no -- there was no roads levy.
There wasn't?
No.
Okay.
It was income tax.
Okay, 'cause he said the roads levy, and I was not familiar with that, so I thought maybe you might remember that.
It was a quarter percent city income tax. The deal was, it was be -- would be, if it was renewed, we would use it for roads, and we would give 100% reciprocity back to the Macedonian residents who worked in another town. That means that this would cost our residents nothing, and it did not get on the ballot.
I didn't know what he was talking about. He said roads levy. Okay.
Well, you were here. All right, moving on. First of all, I wanna thank all you for coming down tonight, because that's what people need to do. And our shows are televised, hopefully, if we got our equipment fixed. Your roads, our equipment, you know, so at any rate, this gets the word out, and that's a good thing. So thank you for coming. All right. Now, we're gonna move on with pending and/or new legislation, starting with Ordinance Number 36, 2004.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to offer Ordinance Number 36, 2014, for its third reading by title only. ti- by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase contract with Income Integrated Computer Systems in order to upgrade the city's existing video system.
And what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to amend ordinance number 36, 2014, to not exceed $8,900.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I, I...
What's your pleasure?
Um, I'd like to pass and post ordinance number 36, 2014, according to law.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Ms. Durangle? Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner? Ms. Tully?
Every dollar is precious. I believe in transparency. I hate that word. Why don't they just say, you need to be able to show everybody what you're doing all the time? Transparency just was a flashy word, I guess. I'm going to vote no, because I think $8,900 needs to go to one of these roads, and I know that's just a drop in the bucket of what we need for them, but that's where the money needs to be spent.
Moving on to ordinance number, and that, that ordinance fails. Moving on to ordinance number 38, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, before I introduce this, this is the ordinance for Airline Drive Improvement, and in our work session, we were going to hold it at second. I would ask council to consider a third reading at this point.
You were really no's.
No.
Oh, okay.
We asked to be held at second reading until we have further information from our meeting next week, and I think we can. We, we will be able to address this issue. We were, we have been told if we address it prior to the middle of July, it will be done this year, so if we want to hold it till, and then I think we've all agreed that.
I agree. I think we need to have the roads meeting, and I'd like to have Scott here to give us an update on the budget. I don't think it's, I understand these people's concerns, I'm sympathetic for them, I, I know Mr. Jenkins, I know about his wife falling, and I certainly am sympathetic to Pat, but I still think we need to have the roads meeting and we need to have an update on our financial situation. So, I'm, I would prefer that we hold it at a second reading. And the, the engineer said we have till July. Oftentimes, we don't make these decisions until the beginning of the second half.
Our engineers had also mentioned that earlier, we can get the more likely it is to occur this year, and that's why I'm in favor of going to a third reading now and getting it done. We have the funding for it. Our budget calls for $2.5 million to be carried over into next year. We're talking about a little over $200,000 for two roads that are in complete disrepair. I mean, the safety aspects of this alone, there's no reason to talk about it anymore. We know what the problem is. We've got people here telling us that, you know, the picture says it all when a tire sticks in the hole up to the rim, and we're going to wait. The safety aspects of this is, is sickening. I can't fathom talking about it anymore when this is the picture I'm looking at, and I'm looking at these people out here saying, we're going to talk about it some more. I think it's sad.
Mr. Ladd, what was the estimate for Airline?
Yeah, I believe it was 115.
275 for the two roads. $275,000.
275 for both.
Well, $300,000. You know, it could be higher, it could be lower, depending on the details.
275 for both Airline and Westwood.
It's, it's right in the ordinance. 115 for Airline and 160 for West, Westwood.
Guys, we would still have over $2 million in carryover.
I agree.
And I, and I agree we're watching our finances. I agree that we're trying to do what is right financially, but if you go down these roads, next year, those, those quotes could double. We all know what happens. My son used to work in concrete. I know we're not going to concrete your road, okay, so you know that. But concrete, every time you turn around, the dollar goes up, it doesn't go down. I, you know, I had asked only for it to be held from the fact that I had the feeling three people would vote no if we offered it, and I don't want a no vote. I don't want to see it fail. And I don't know what next week's meeting is going to do with the list that was provided that has 180, I don't count the last row because it's 82, 185 streets on it. If we don't start acting on some of them, this 180-something's going to explode into adding all our streets. I, I would have to agree with Mr. Molner that we need to take action. We don't do both of them, we do, start out with Airline while we talk about the second one, but let's do something. And it's interesting to find that this council, depending on the topic, will put it on and ask for it to have three readings and move right along, and depending on another topic, want to keep studying it. This one doesn't need a lot of studying. Mr. LaPerro and Mr. Jenkins, I'm surprised you two haven't been up here long before because the B streets have been ignored, and I've always said, B streets, B streets, Blueberry, Bradford. Now I finally have got one even worse. It's time to take action.
Okay, have we?
Are all three of you in favor of holding it?
Yeah, we're holding it.
Okay, upset. Thank you.
Well...
I'd like to offer ordinance 38, 2014, for, well, holding it second.
We're holding it, sir.
I need a second, please.
We're holding it at second.
You are holding it at second, and you all have to agree that you're going to hold it at second, so I need a...
No.
Oh, sorry.
No.
Just move on to the next ordinance.
All right.
Uh, same thing again, ordinance 39, 2014, hold it second reading.
She didn't read, um, 38.
Yeah.
It's already...
Yeah.
You have to offer it though for...
We're not, we're not there.
For second reading?
No.
Okay.
I think we're at 45.
Ordinance number 45, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 45, 2013, for its second and third reading by title only.
14, 2014.
2014, excuse me.
I need a second.
Second.
She's got to read it now.
No.
Yes.
Second and third reading, all in favor?
No.
No.
So, it gets its second reading.
Do you like me to read it now?
Yes, please.
An emergency ordinance providing for the review of the charter by the Charter Review Commission, fixing its duties and establishing procedure for the review.
Moving on to resolution number 46, 2014.
I'd like to offer resolution number 46, 2014, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. A resolution authorizing the city of Macedonia to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Summit Soil and Water Conservation District to encourage cooperation towards the attainment of environmental stewardship, including but not limited to the goals of the community's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Phase II municipal storm water permit, and to appropriate funds towards the general operations of the Summit Soil Conservation District, which supports this effort.
And what's your pleasure?
Well, before I do that, that's a mouthful. So, everybody's probably saying, what the heck was that? Jim, would you like to explain it in layman's terms?
What it is is an agreement or a permit that's required by the EPA for our Phase II permit, and we get it every year. It's, it's an annual permit, and it's required. We have to do it.
Thank you. I'd like to offer that we pass and post according to law, resident, resolution number 46, 2014, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanneken?
Yes.
Mr. Molner?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Resolution 46, 2014 passes. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the service director to advertise for bids for refuse and rubbish collection for the city of Macedonia.
Need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Now, what this basically does is, we negotiate a fee that the residents pay, but by us doing the negotiation, it's better than the resident trying to go out by themselves and get a cost. So, over the years, it's worked out pretty well, where we get you a good cost and good service, and by doing it this way. Plus, if you have each different resident maybe having a different refuse company, then we talk about how bad our streets are, think what they would be like if you had six garbage trucks on that street a week instead of one. All right, moving on to correspondence from the clerk.
I have several, sir.
Ms. Tully asked me to read this email. It is from Dan Dorley of Westwood Drive. I saw an article in Today's News Leader where Westwood Drive was discussed. I wanted to comment as we live on that road. It appears that all agree that our road is very bad shape and needs to, from the ground up, to be resurfaced. This is reassuring, but why would we wait through another winter? We moved here from Menor four years ago and never considered that an uneven, broken-up road in one of the city's better subdivisions would remain in disrepair. I understand that there are other roads that need attention, but our road isn't going to hold much longer. I have a sewer grate at the end of my driveway and pieces of the road find their way into that grate consistently. I clear the pieces when rain, rainwater backs up in ponds because of the, the street cannot drain. With the annual tax assessed on these homes, I think that Westwood, we on Westwood contribute our share to Macedonia. It doesn't seem to me that having a safe, drivable road is asking too much. I hope that you will keep this, what is said above, in mind and consider the next step, Dear Chief, this is to Chief John Golden. My wife and I would like to thank you and your entire staff and officers for the service you provide our community. We have our home watched very politely and professionally by your staff while we are away. It is a comfort to know that you are here on watch, and she puts emprints. You should be so proud of your people and what they do for all of us. This is from Tom and Judy, Chair Jack of Tuscany Drive. This is also to, regarding the police department, and this is regarding Officer Chris Holmes. And this is from Kimberly Staples, who thanks the department and particularly Chris Holmes for his professionalism, his expedient response to when her keys were locked in her car.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next is the mayor's report. A lot of things that normally I would talk about in my mayor's report have been discussed on the floor tonight in an effort to move things along. We have a total revenue from our courts of $38,340.50. This evening, we are missing a couple of department heads, and there's a lot, a lot, a lot of things going on with Angela. Angela is a whirlwind because we have Spirit of Macedonia coming up very early in June, and there's just a million things that have to be done. Uh, my staff is constantly meeting and talking about how we're going to make this happen. If we can pull it off, it's really going to be a good festival, and I'd like to thank Nick for bringing this back, because not only are roads important, but our self-image and what we do for our community, just to give them some community pride, is important, too. Other than that, we'll go right into committee reports.
Just short, just a very short update. We will be having the Streets and Highways Committee meeting at 7:00 PM Wednesday, May 14th. Public is invited, and we will be discussing the roads and their condition, the current priorities, and what things we can do this year, what is unlikely to be done until next year, and then what are the financing issues. So, we will be happy to have as many residents as possible at the meeting, but we're going to have, have that meeting. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Macedonia Planning Commission, May 19th, 2014, at 5:30. We will have a proposed storage building for Dave's Autobody at 9270 Valley View Road, a proposed signage at 711 at 316 East Highland Road, a proposed concrete patio for, oh, boy, that's in a Mexican, Do's Coronas Restaurant at 269 Highland Road, a proposed pavilion for Summit Point at 9633 Valley View Road, a proposed park U-Haul vehicles on property for rent for Space Place in Macedonia LLC at 89445 South Freeway, a proposed signage for Jersey Mike's Subs at 8210 Macedonia Commons Boulevard, a proposed signage for Pinsky at 1261 East Highland Road, a proposed signage relocation for GNC at 8210 Macedonia Commons Boulevard, a proposed signage for Alta at 8210 Macedonia Commons Boulevard, a proposed signage for Mattress Firm at Northeast Corner of Route 8 in East Aurora Road, a proposed six parking, wait, a proposed six parking light poles for Noradonia Hills City Schools at 8006 South Bedford Road. And that's all I have. That will be May, May 19th at 5:30.
It sounds like about a four-hour meeting. All right, any other department reports?
Committee reports. We'd love to be at departments, but we're committees. The Parks and Rec Committee was canceled the other evening. I would like to express our condolences to Mrs. Molner and loss of her aunt. We are trying to reschedule for next week. I don't think it's been firmed up yet, but we're probably looking at doing Tuesday since we have the roads on Wednesday, so, um, look on the web and, and we usually post it, it has to be posted. If you're interested in coming, it's always held up at the Recreation Center. Thank you.
All right, now, any other committee reports? If not, department reports. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things to announce. The mulching, we've been getting a lot of calls, people are wondering when they're going to get their mulch. It won't be ground till next week, probably around the 12th, and then hopefully by the end of next week, which should be 14th, I'm hoping, 15th, we'll supply by the old firehouse like we've done every year. So, just so everyone's aware that it is going to be done, this is as soon as it could get done, and we'll have it hopefully by the end of next week. And just a reminder that the Garden Club is holding its annual plant sale this Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00. So, I hope you can go there and give them your business, buy some plants, all right? That's my report right now, Mayor.
Jimmy, I had a resident ask me a question, and I'm supposed to ask you. Who actually does our mulching? Who, do you send out, do you send that out for a private company to do it and then, and then they charge us?
Yeah, there's only a few that do it. Yeah, and then they, they charge us for it, sure.
Okay.
It costs us.
Okay, um, because the only reason why this was brought up to me, I had heard that there was a company on Freeway Drive, I want, I don't, not sure if it's Green, they used to do it for free.
No, there was always a charge.
There was always a charge? Okay, this, I told them I would ask, and it was brought up to me, so that's...
And in fact, we asked four companies. Three of them basically said they don't, they only do it for themselves now, and that included Green Line.
Okay.
And so I have ProTree.
Okay, so ProTree...
ProTree.
And then Green, Green Line did charge?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I was told it was free, and you, the city, not you, the city had stopped using them, and I was to ask why. But it, you answered it, so I wouldn't...
We've been using ProTree probably for the last two, three years.
I, I didn't even know that it was subbed out, so I, I just learned this and...
Yeah, he basically said that he's only going to take care of his own product.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to let you know, Macedonia Commercial Building Department received an ISO rating of a three. That's good news for us, a little bit more money in, in our budget, and I can, I can approve those numbers. Construction at the Gordon Food Center site is progressing, and they're planning opening in July. Construction will also begin at the retail center on Route 882 in the next few weeks. We received checks this week for the permits at Enclave at Macedonia, and the checks that we received totaled $100... we received totaled $179,298.64. And then, we'll issue permits next week based on that money received. Pre-construction meeting was held for Vista Springs. We're issuing an engineering and grading permit, and they should be started next week as well. New home starts, we have 14. We have 64 homes under construction, five additions, and 14 alterations. Zoning update, we did 114 point-of-sales so far this year, and 376 contractors have registered. And that concludes my report.
That's a lot. Thank you. Tim?
The only thing I have, Mayor, is the firefighters have started the annual hydrant flushing and maintenance program. So, we have signs up, and if you see a rescue squad or a utility truck, please be careful going around them as they're out working on flowing hydrants. That's all I have.
Very good. John?
Mayor, as you're aware, we have a few more horn complaints from the railroads again. I put it on Facebook a couple times. I'll say it again. There are federal regulations that govern the railroads. When there are people on or near the railroad tracks, the trains have to blow their horn. Unfortunately, some of the folks who called complained about the mayor lied about the quiet zone. There's no sense having a quiet zone. They called me and asked me to do something, and if I don't do anything about the horns, then I'm not worth anything. There are guidelines. There is construction on Twinsburg Road rail crossing. That's why they're blowing the horns. For those of you who have Nixle, I'm gonna throw a shout-out for Nixle again. We just sent a thing out about 7:30 that the grade crossing at Twinsburg Road was open. So, the construction there is done. There probably won't be any more horns heard down in that neighborhood, as you and I both got complaints today about that. Throughout the year, they work periodically all over the tracks. You'll see the little orange cars going back and forth. The trains have to blow their horn when they pass those people. And I, a lot of people are confused by train horns. They think, they hear a train horn, it's blowing because it's going across a grade crossing. There are specific sounds for going across a grade crossing. There are specific sounds for when they're going to uncouple. There are specific sounds for braking, for releasing the brake, and all those things. And you can find those all online. The easiest thing is to listen to what the sound is, and probably 99.9% of the horns that you're hearing now are when they're passing somebody on the tracks. There's a specific sound that you hear when they go over grade crossing, and that's not what you're hearing. It's when they're passing people on the tracks. So, hopefully, we won't have any more complaints about hearing train horns again, but it seems to pop up, you know, every other month. We seem to get more complaints that, you know, "Why are we hearing train horns? The mayor promised quiet zone. We don't have any more grade crossings," and on and on. So, hopefully, that'll resolve that. We had the incident at the school for, by the time this airs, most people have probably read about it in the paper. A young man, 19-years-old, made a threat against the school and a student up there. He stated things about going up there and shooting the school Columbine, like he's in our jail. He has a $500,000 cash bond, so I highly doubt he's going anywhere. And we did an extensive investigation on it, and we searched his home. We searched his computers. We searched his phone. He did not have the means to carry out his threats, which I think will make a lot of people more at ease. But as he found out, you can't make those kind of threats in this day and age. It just doesn't, doesn't work. So, there should be no problems. We had a police presence at Ledgeview and the high school. I've been in contact with Dr. Clark, the superintendent, Casey Wright, and Donna Bambick, and everything is fine.
That was a good chat. And Kurt's right, we need that other detective because you do so much with the detectives we have. It's amazing.
We've been talking about that. As long as we've been talking about fixing roads, probably, I don't know, six, eight, 10 years. I mean, it's been a long time we've been talking about. We've had two detectives in the bureau since the 80s. Two detectives in the bureau since the 80s. It's only gotten busier. We have more things to deal with, but, you know, hopefully, council will find a way to get us another detective. Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, if you could only go back to the 80s as far as crime, because the stuff they do today is just unbelievable.
A lot of white collar.
And we have it all in that stoney, don't we, John?
A lot of white-collar crime, a lot of fraud that comes up that we have to deal with. They're dealing with a case now, subject in Arizona. Another fraud case we're dealing with is down in Florida. It's a little bit here, a little bit in Florida. It takes a lot of time for these cases. These just aren't, somebody stole from the shopping center type thing. These are complex issues that tie up a lot of time, a lot of search warrants, a lot of paperwork to go through. It's more difficult now, so...
It's not unusual for me to sign three warrants a day. And that's a lot of work, each warrant. Thank you very much, John. All right, Joe?
No, we're...
All right. Do we have any old business? New business?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to mention that I, the Ledg road bridge issue that we've talked about tonight, I have spoken to the Chief of Staff for Dave Joyce and asked him to focus on two questions. Do the railroads acknowledge that they have to replace that bridge? And if they do, do they have money to do it? And two, what can we do to increase the pressure on them to at least acknowledge that that bridge has to be replaced, if not before the 271 big project after that? So, I hope we can get some help on that, and I appreciate the fact that you've gone forward and trying to get help. So, just wanted to say that.
Good. Any other new business? Hearing none, do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Is there anybody in?
Yes, he's in.
Yes, he is in there.